Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, May 15th Board of Aldermen meeting. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and it's been seconded. Any corrections or revisions to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll move on to the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. If you'd like to address the board, I ask that you wait to be called and when you're called, you walk to the podium, state your name and town of residence, and speak into the microphone so that Peg TV can capture your audio for the live broadcast. First, we have Randall Smathers, Director of the Rutland Free Library, here to talk about a new building project at the library. Welcome.
Thank you, and I am in fact a resident of the city of Rutland as well. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you today. It occurs to me that I somewhat buried the lead on the background paper I handed out. We stand a very good chance of getting a half million dollars from the federal government to do work on 10 Court Street. So, that's the lead. It would be a competitive grant, but given what we have been told by the State Department of Libraries, we stand an excellent chance of getting it. We can target our building plans exactly to fit what they're looking for, and they haven't told us the exact rubric that they'll be using to hand the money out, but three of the categories they will be looking at are older buildings that are in need of work, we certainly qualify for that, in communities that are of relatively high needs, so we qualify for that, and thus far, they've given all their money to Chittenden County, so they're looking to spread the wealth, so we would qualify for that as well. In anticipation of this, we have started a full-scale building project. Those of you who were following our attempted move to the College of St. Joseph will know that we had about a million and a half dollars, probably about a million two, that we could afford to spend on this project. We would be putting it into this project, so we're looking at something like a million and a half to 1.7 million dollars going into 10 Court Street. That is still a city-owned building, so it will require a great deal of cooperation with the city, and we look forward to working with the city. I have invited all the aldermen up for a tour at any time, and that offer still stands. And the other thing that I am coming today to do, we are in the very early design phase. This came as a little bit of a surprise, it was a very short notice. We have to have all our work done in preparation for a grant proposal by the end of August this year, so that's a very quick turnaround. It requires architectural design, cost estimates, scope of work, and then a formal proposal from the library. So to get all that done, we have already started that work. We've engaged with two local firms, NBF Architects and Engineering Services of Vermont, to do the basic groundwork for us. They have given us an estimate for those services, and it is a rough estimate, but an estimate of $18,000 to cover the cost. And I would ask the Board of Aldermen to support this substantial improvement to 10 Court Street by helping us by paying that $18,000. First off, we need every dollar we can get. A million and a half doesn't cover as much as it did a few months ago, a couple years back. And second, they haven't released the full rubric, but it would be unusual if it didn't include a demonstration of widespread community support. And there is no better way to show widespread community support than to have the governing body of the city support our proposal by helping us pay the planning costs on the project. And that's it.
All right, are there questions from members of the board for Randall?
Yes.
Alderwoman McClure.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Smathers. It's greatly appreciated. As your neighbor, I reside at 9 Court Street, so I'm right across the street. I'd like to say thank you for coming before us all and being here for the neighborhood as well. It's much appreciated. I see here in this handout that you provided that you are proposing turning the building around and creating a fully ADA compliant entrance on the east end of the building.
Yes.
How will that impact the sidewalks on that east side of the building? Will there need to be sidewalk changes for it to come up and meet, or will it sort of seamlessly integrate into how it exists now?
That's one of the questions that we're dealing with, NBF, on. Right now, we're looking at probably a diagonal entrance, so that it's more pedestrian-friendly, but there is a possibility that it would come in from the due east end of the building. We are hoping to put in at least two handicap-accessible parking spaces, which the library desperately needs. They need to be researching things like how big a setback we need to allow before we can really get into the final part of the planning. But the way it's set up now, it is officially an ADA-compatible building, but it truly is not. Anybody who's ever used it, who uses a wheelchair, has told me that. This would give us an opportunity to have a grade-level entrance straight from either a parking spot or the sidewalk with no interruptions, so that people who do have limited mobility could access the library without all the barriers that are currently there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we're very likely to need to send this to committee for discussion of sort of detailed questions like that, granular questions, so are there any sort of general questions about the library's ask? Alderman Gillum.
I'd like to move this to Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Davis will reach out about scheduling the Finance Committee meeting. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Yes, come up to the podium.
Commercial break. My name is Joanne O'Hagan. I am here representing the Rutland Garden Club. One of our major fundraisers of the year, our plant sale, is taking place this coming Saturday on Center Street, just off Main. We have plants that the garden club members have prepared, and we will have hundreds of plants available at a very low price, so we hope you join us. Concurrently this year, we are having a bake sale, because we have opened a scholarship for a Rutland High School senior who is coming out of, graduating out and studying in things that relate to our natural environment. We have done that to encourage the pursuit of that and hopefully to inspire the younger generations to sort of continue the sort of community service that we do. We've been around since 1914. We've been involved in civic beautification. You will see us out, we start right around June 1st. You'll see us out and about in our pink t-shirts. So I am personally inviting all of you and anybody we would like to tell to come to our plant sale and bake sale at 9 o'clock on Saturday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Of course. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on matters not on the agenda?
I live on Easterly Avenue. I have a question. Have we, has the board passed a resolution calling attention to Asian American Pacific Islander Month over the course of?
I can't hear you.
Yeah. Has the, okay, my name is Russell Flannery, living on Easterly Avenue. I have a question. Has the board passed a resolution calling out May as Asia-Pacific Islander Month nationally, allotting the contribution of Asian Americans to Rutland's cultural life and our economic development?
Not during my time on the board, no.
Okay. So I noticed recently that, I believe it's Tokyo House is the Japanese restaurant, was dedicating a couple of days of profit, or a couple of afternoons of profit, to an exchange program between students at Rutland and a Japanese sister school. And I think that's a small example of the kind of enrichment that the Asian-American community brings to Rutland. And seeing that this has been a nationally-recognized month to call attention to the contribution of Asian-Americans, I would like to suggest to the board that the board consider a declaration or a statement which in brief would just call attention to this being nationally-recognized Asian American Pacific Islander Month nationwide, that it celebrates the cultural contribution to Rutland and the further contribution to the economic development of the city.
Alderwoman Toddio.
Thank you for coming and thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I will make a motion to refer this to General Committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this initiative to General, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Anyone else here to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. Communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus.
Good evening. Okay, first item for me is, I would, for your consideration, I'd like to submit the following nomination for appointment, DPW Commissioner Bob Protovansky. I ask that you please, as is customary, table these nominations until your next board meeting on Monday, June 5th.
Great, so I would entertain a motion to table?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion, a motion to table the nomination, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. So, as I mentioned in last Board of Alderman meeting, I did get the opportunity to meet with Angus from the Homeless Prevention Center. We talked about what's going on in our community right now. I'll mention that the first, and there's a bit of a phased end to the hotel housing program. The first end will be on June 1st. On June 1st, there'll be about 190-some-odd people that will, that their housing will end in the hotels, and they'll have to look for a new place. This is, you know, this is a big change for them, and it's also a big change for Rutland. I've spoken with chief about making sure that PD is ready to go. We've talked to private security as well. Angus and his team, as well as many others, are ready for this change. More will come in the future. That is just the first wave. The second wave will be essentially July 1st, will be the remainder of the program ends. So please be aware, you'll be hearing more from me in the future on that. Center Street is now set up downtown for the summer with the parklets installed, so thanks to DPW, Rutland Rec, and the Downtown Partnership for their swift work on that. We had actually, early in the, after the election, we had talked about Center Street going one-way this summer to try it out for the future of Center Street. It just turned out that the logistical nature of trying to do that this summer was complex. You know, we have to consider police, fire, letting the public know, so we'll be looking at trying that one-way out at a different time, but just not during the summer period. So, but enjoy the parklets and your time outside this summer on Center Street. So what we're actively doing, the capital improvement plan, 1% option tax, is now passed the House and the Senate. It just needs the governor's signature at this point, so House Bill 505 is what you can go look up on the legislature site, and that's, you know, you can see the final language there. We're waiting for the signature, and when that happens, we'll need to notify businesses. So that's a big piece, is the notification to businesses. So, the treasurer and I were talking about that today, and we're going to try to figure out what the process is there, whether the state's going to take care of majority of that, what we need to do from a city standpoint, so we'll come back to you with that in the future as well. Heavy emphasis on housing in the past few weeks, so the ad hoc housing community has met a couple of times. The first thing on the agenda for that is the money that we had set aside a few board meetings ago for the housing assessment light. We're actually going to not have to use that right now, we're going to reserve that for later. There's a couple of other housing assessments that are going on. We'll be able to leverage that data for what we need, so in this case, rather than spending the money and duplicating efforts, we'll put that money back aside and wait for the next step in the process on that. The Rutland City Housing Trust Fund is a big discussion of what's happening here. So now, I want to make sure that I clarify this. There is a difference between what I am talking about with the Rutland City Housing Trust Fund and the Rutland Housing Trust. So this is not the Rutland Housing Trust. This is a fund that the committee is, the ad hoc committee has been talking about establishing to find different sources of money to bring housing development and redevelopment to Rutland, right? Being able to fund developers, find them discounted loans, find them, you know, potential grant opportunities, and this can all go into a fund. So the reason I bring that up is right now, we've been talking about for the past several meetings, the my 10%, or the 10% for Vermont, not mine, but the 10% for Vermont, coming from the state treasurer's office. And as part of that application process, which by the way, is due on June 1st, we've been discussing a revolving loan fund specifically as part of this housing, Rutland City Housing Trust Fund. That is something that we would like to send to committee to have discussed as soon as possible and then brought back, because we would like to move on that for the application that's coming. So if we could send that to committee, now there's two, a bit of a two-phased approach here. The next Board of Alderman meeting is going to be on June 5th, and the application is due on June 1st. So we want to discuss this in committee, but we also want to be able to apply for this. So I do believe that kind of doing the research here, we may need two motions. One to give me permission to go and apply. Apply means no commitment, we're just putting, putting that together, so we can put the application together, and then the committee discussion can be around, you know, whether this is something that we want to do, how we want to do it, how we want to go about it. If, if we decide that after that process has taken place, that it's not something we want to do, we can withdraw our application, but this would allow us to get out ahead. So the first motion I would ask for is the referral to committee, and then the second would be the application for the Housing Trust Fund.
Alderwoman Hooker.
I would move that we allow the mayor to make the application, to prepare the application for funds from the 10% for Vermont program?
Okay.
To go to a revolving loan fund.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And it has been seconded to allow the mayor to apply for the 10% for Vermont Loan Fund?
Yes. You'll need, what?
Okay.
You'll need to suspend the rules for that one.
Oh, sorry.
So motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now Alderwoman Hooker, would you like to make your motion again? So her motion again, to allow you to apply, it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I'd entertain a motion to refer, what committee did we want to refer this to?
Community and Economic Development, please.
Yep.
I will move to refer to Community and Economic Development.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of the program to Community and Economic Development, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. On that same topic, as this is a piece of it, there are four other potential opportunities that will be part of the application to the 10% for Vermont, including a downtown hotel, Cassington Senior Living, Rutland City Housing Trust Fund, and the Rutland County Housing Trust Project, as well as a revolving loan fund for neighbor work. So there's a lot going on, there's a lot of applications. You know, the state has really encouraged Rutland and other communities like Rutland to get involved and take advantage of this, so I think we have a great opportunity for some of those to work out. Okay, awesome. Got that? Okay, so what are we doing next? The Vermont League of Cities and Towns meeting is this week. I'm now on the board there. They nominated me and voted for me to be up there, so I'm going up on Wednesday with Marian from West Rutland, and we'll be visiting for that meeting and representing Rutland while I'm there. The Rutland City Police Department is holding their award ceremony tomorrow night at 5:30. 5:30 to 6:00 is refreshments, 6 o'clock is the ceremony itself. So this is an award ceremony and a memorial service. The community is absolutely invited to come and participate and support our police department and show them your support while they receive awards and are recognized for their achievements. All right, and the last thing on the list. So several meetings ago, I mentioned the gap in needed resources at City Hall. We have several positions that we need to fill to keep moving our city forward, and one of them is a DPW Commissioner position, which I have made the appointment tonight. Historically, the city engineer and the DPW Commissioner position are budgeted as two separate positions. However, recently, it's been budgeted as one. In the next year's budget, there's only funding for that one combined position, so in order to fill that position, we need to budget for that and separate that. We also need to fill an administrative position, as well as hire a zoning technician, freeing up our current planning and zoning administrator to focus his time and skills on city planning. Now, over the last two months, and especially in the last several weeks, I've been looking into our budget and expenses, and at the end of the fiscal year, on June 30th, the city of Rutland will have an anticipated funding surplus in DPW legal in a few other areas. After looking into both of these needs and our budget, I'm coming to the board this evening with a request in order to ensure that we can fund these positions in DPW administration and zoning. I do not want to hire for these positions without knowing that we have the allocated proper funding. Therefore, with the intent of funding these three positions, including benefits and appropriate overhead, I would ask the board tonight to suspend the rules and make a motion to earmark these surplus funds in the amount of $380,000 to be allocated next fiscal year.
Alderwoman Toddio.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gillum.
I think this should be referred to Finance, so we can talk about this a little bit more, because this is a lot of information coming into us at the last moment. Need to know the real numbers. I need to get the treasurer in there to give us exactly the breakdown of FICA and all the other taxes included, and the benefit packages we're going to have to do for that. It's not clear to me what this whole thing looks like.
Alderman McCann.
I would like to refer that to Finance.
Thanks, Bill. So question to the mayor, is there a reason that this would need to be decided on tonight?
Well, we could certainly refer it to committee. I've actually done all that, and I can give the printout and show all the work and show where the money's coming from. The reason I wanted to get it done tonight was because I want to start moving on getting these positions hired. They would all start in July, and there's a bit of a run-up, so I was hoping to not delay in that process. I'd be happy to discuss that, but the fund, the surplus will be anticipated to be available, so I was asking to move quickly, but like I said, happy to discuss it.
Any additional discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
I think, fine, the suspend rules, it takes a second for Senate or committee.
Did it get seconded?
I'll check.
Okay, so it's been seconded? All right, any further discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Alderwoman Toddio.
Yeah, I.
I'd like to challenge that, Mr. President. I believe referring committee takes precedent over suspending the rules. I would like you to make a ruling on that.
Our parliamentarian, Attorney Blumer.
That was my understanding as well, but I can check very quickly.
Did you make a motion to refer to committee?
I did, I made a motion to send to Finance.
Okay.
That takes precedent over suspending the rules.
It definitely takes, the motion to refer would definitely take precedence over whatever motion is coming next, but we could take a short recess for me to decide whether it's, whether it goes before the suspension of the rules.
So I would entertain a motion for a short recess?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're recessed. All right, so we're coming back from the recess here at 7:26. So we have a motion to suspend the rules and it has passed. I would entertain any new motions. Alderwoman Toddio?
I would make a motion to earmark the surplus funds in the amount of $380,000 to be allocated for the next fiscal year for salary positions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and it has been seconded?
Yes, I do want to talk about this because I believe that we've already passed a budget and the taxpayers have approved that budget. He's asking for some more money and new positions that are not in the budget right now. I believe that we need to slow down and look at this closely so we know what the, I don't have no numbers in front of me. I have no idea what we're voting on here. I think this is wrong and this is not good for the taxpayers.
Then I think you should make a motion to refer to Finance Committee.
I would like to do that. So moved.
All right, so we-
Second.
So we have a motion to refer to Finance and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Alderman McCann?
Yeah, I don't want to drag things just for the sake of dragging them, but I do appreciate Alderman Gillon's concern about, this is a lot of information. It's a big budget change. It's new positions. And I mean, I would think at the very least even asking the mayor to come back with, he said he's got the numbers that he's worked out. Having that information for us to see before we vote on it would be helpful. So even if it was tabled until the next Board of Aldermen meeting and included more of that information for us to make a decision on as maybe an intermediate between requiring it to go to committee versus us just voting on it tonight. I don't-
Well, that would significantly gum up the works if you made a third motion on top of the ones that we figured out others.
You gotta take her one before we go to the other.
One would be better.
So we have a mo-, Mayor Dungus?
I'll just make a comment on Alderman Gillon's motion. I absolutely have no problem discussing this in committee. I think that's a perfectly fine ask and I'd be more than happy to present all the numbers and go over what I'm, you know, trying to do. Again, the request was moving quickly because I'd like to get these positions hired for next year. I can still start on a lot of that and wait till make any decisions until we review it in committee. So that's totally fine, by the way. I support Bill's motion as well.
All right, so we have a, currently, we're talking about a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee, which has been seconded. Any additional discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of referring to Finance?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So I believe, according to Attorney Blumer, that other motion just sort of dissipates into the ether. All right, so Alderwoman Davis will reach out about scheduling that meeting. Any additional communications from the mayor?
No, that's it.
Do we need, something about a public hearing?
Oh, yes. Sorry. One second, actually. It's on my phone. Thank you. Alderman Talbot. Excuse me. Sorry, too many barbers on my phone. Maybe not three.
Thank you for your patience.
Should we come back to this under new business?
No, I'll have it in two seconds.
All right.
Or maybe four seconds. Here we go.
We'll give you five.
Yeah, bring it back to me under new business.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have one addition, a special events permit request from the Rutland VFW for a Memorial Day service at West Street Cemetery. I'd also like to move Alderwoman Toddio's May 4th Community and Economic Development Report up to be read alongside the first item on reports and letters from department heads and officials as it's directly connected to that first item in the section. And I'd like to move the special event permits to the next item on the agenda so those folks can get out of here. So I'd entertain a motion to approve these changes. Alderman Gillon's moved?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, we have two special event permit approval requests. The first is for Fight Night New England 1 to be held June 24th, 2023 at the Rutland Community Center. Details are on pages 44 to 50 of your packet. I should note that approvals from Commissioner Rotundo and Chief Lovett are included as attachments following the permit request, and approval from Chief Kil Cullen and Superintendent Peters were sent to you all via email. Is there anyone here to speak to this special event
First, I'd like to thank this new business that's coming to Rutland. When they first came to me, we've been looking at this for about four to six months and how we can make this work at the community center. I'm very excited about it. I support it. It was a little bit of a culture like, okay, what are we doing? But, you know, they're going to speak a little bit about the event and I think it's exciting for what we're looking, what they're looking at for the next year, what they want to start in Rutland. So I'm going to turn it over to probably Nick and talk a little bit about it because it is new, right?
Hello, everybody.
Welcome.
I'm Nick. And basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to bring something to the community and something for people to look forward to. The idea is we're looking to do this every, every two months is the idea behind what we're looking. And in that, we're going to do 50/50 raffles towards the community, such as our first one is going to go to the REC Center and then donations along the way as well. We just want something better for the state, something so everybody can come and have an event to go to or look forward to every month. So we're excited. We're super excited and we appreciate this beyond belief.
Any questions or comments from board members? Attorney Blumer, your approval was not on the permit. Did you-
Yeah, so we, through Kim, I've had discussions with the insurance provider for these folks and it seems like we will get there. But it may just be an email or two back and forth to get the certificate of insurance, I guess the way that I'm hoping to get it.
So should we approve pending final approval from city attorney?
Yep.
I would do that.
Are you making that motion, Alderman Gillon?
We need to suspend the rules first.
Motion to suspend the-
Move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hooker. Does it have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Any discussion?
Can you share the exciting details of the event?
So Fight Night New England, the whole basis is we're bringing amateurs from gyms around the area as well as outside the area, as well as special guests from MMA. Tim Silva and Matt Hughes are coming here for the event as well. Just to get meet and greet, it's like she said, it's new to the life, you know? MMA is a big thing that has picked up in the several years and we're excited to really bring it to Vermont, bring it to Rutland, bring it here, you know, and make it something normal to people.
Alderman Barbara Gallo?
Mr. President, the question that I asked you about earlier, would, do I need to ask that now or after the rules are suspended?
You can ask it now, but you can also ask it after the rules have been suspended.
I'll ask it now, then. I understand this is a private event that's being held on city property and you are providing insurance so that you are covered.
Yes.
And you are also serving alcohol at this event. Is that understood?
Yes. So the alcohol will be done through the Roots. They have their own alcohol license and everything else like that. But the idea is, is nothing will come into the actual event itself. So we're going to put a projector screen on the back of the actual REC Center so there's no alcohol inside of the building. So it will be very generalized to one area and not moved from that area.
Okay. My question is either one or two to all, Attorney Blumer. Is the city responsible for anything on this event basically under, it used to be called the Dram Shop Act. Is that still the name of it, first off? And if we are responsible, would our insurance cover something for an alcohol-related incident?
So I see Kim was moving towards the microphone. She may have looked into this. I have not looked into it at all. So she may have looked into this and I know they have other events that use the public parks. And my understanding, at least from talking with her about those events, are that the vendor's license is, you know, we're just renting the property and we're not, you know, the example that you gave, you know, if somebody is over-served and, you know, has an accident or something, that's not something that we would be responsible for. There may be other considerations that, you know, beyond the sort of Dram Shop laws, but Kim may know from her experience with other events and the publics as to how it-
Yeah, the only thing I would speak to is that we do hold events, like we just had the business show at the REC that served alcohol within the facility through Roots. We had the Center Street Foosball that had alcohol at. So all of those, what we take care of is, we're very fortunate to have someone like Donald Billings who is, who knows the rules of his permitting, knows what he needs to do in order to protect his license. And then what I do is I receive his permit a couple days prior to the event. They go through the clerk's office and it's done that way. From the city perspective, this is the way, I hate to use, it's always been done, but they do have, as long as the person that is permitted, which is Roots, abides by their law because they're the licensed that would be at risk.
Okay.
Alderman Gillon?
So let me add a little bit more light to this because this is what I used to do for a living. The folks going in there to serve the alcohol has a liquor license for off-premise, has to be approved by the city first, and then it has to go to the state. The state has jurisdiction over that, so they can come in at any time and inspect that property. It's run just like if there was a restaurant inside that facility. Same rules apply. Nobody under 21, the whole nine yards. No over-serving, all those type of things. Plus, his insurance, his liability insurance has to add the city as an additional insurer to his policy. That would work the same way as these people renting the property works the same way. So it would hit his policy first before you even come to the city. Okay. I just wanted to make sure the city wouldn't be stuck on the hook for something that we aren't anticipating. So if the city is covered, I have no problem with it. Right. And it's state law, you have to carry liability insurance now.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. It has been discussed. Any additional discussion?
Thank you.
Alderwoman Hooker?
Thank you. Could you just tell me what the sort of age group is that this is geared for?
So the idea is, we're actually, we're trying to make it to everybody. It's like, we're looking for a certain age group. 14-plus is what we were originally thinking for the idea of the show. Just because it's, I know my kids. I have two stepkids, one's 14 and one's 17, and they get super excited about the show. Now Jared also has children. Jared has been in the fight community. He's the one who knows mostly about this stuff. Or even his six-year-old is in love with fighting. Four-year-old, you know? But it's all designed for, hopefully, whatever we can bring to light for people to really see the benefits of this.
And MMA is mixed martial arts?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't like-
It's not like bare-knuckle brawls or anything else like that. So mixed martial arts is more of a, again, you can speak more on this, but it's more grappling and fighting and kickboxing and all those different things put together. Boxing, all of it, really.
And I noticed that it says New England 1, 01. Why is that?
Because our goal is to do this every two months in hopes. That's our goal, is to keep it. So it's a regular show that's happening in Rutland.
Okay. So that's, that just indicates the first event.
That's the first event.
Wondered if you were the first one to do it. Where else is this done?
So it's done in Berry. We're actually going to a show in Waterbury, New York. Sorry, Watertown, New York. It's done all over the place. I mean, Massachusetts, MGM Grand, I'm in there, Las Vegas. It's everywhere.
So I think we've had enough discussion related to suspending the rules. We should actually suspend the rules if we want to get into this much discussion about whether or not to approve it. So all those in favor of suspending the rules and taking up this permit tonight?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional discussion or questions about the event? Alderman McCann?
So if you do get some momentum and get it going every other month, would it stay the same location and we'd be doing special events permits every other month? Or would we do a longer-term special events permit? Or are there other locations you might move to?
In my, in my goals is would just to do a longer-term one because I plan on doing this for as long as I possibly can, you know? I mean, I don't see an end to this. I don't see a reason to end this. I think that everything is going smoothly. We're all licensed with the state. We have everything all set up the way that we wanted to go. And I think for the foreseeable future is what I would do.
Okay. But then this first one is just for the first event?
This is for the first event, yes.
Alderwoman Toddio?
Motion to approve the special event permit request for Fight Night New England Number 1 for June 24th, 2023, from 6:00 PM till 1:00 AM at the Community Drive Rutland at the community center, pending attorney's signature.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the special event permit pending the attorney's final approval, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gillon?
My only concern with this event is parking. Hopefully, we will not have any parking on the road next to the neighbors. That would be my only concern.
Superintendent Peters is nodding in a positive, heartwarming fashion.
We have asked Casella to use their parking again. They are aware. These are all the prior conversations that we've had. This will be our third largest event with over 1,000, and we're learning that parking is an issue. So we're going to have a backup plan if we can. We're in discussion on another option for any event. This is, we've had two events that have been over 1,000 and we've realized that we don't have enough parking. Casella has, we just put them on our insurance. John Senior has agreed to allow this event, but we know that's not always going to be available. So, but yeah, thank you.
Good question. Anything additional? All right. All those in favor of approving the special event permit?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much. We very appreciate it.
All right, next, we have a special event permit request from the Rutland VFW for a Memorial Day service at West Street Cemetery, and this was placed on your desk. Is there someone here to speak to this permit request?
Move to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to approve the permit.
Is there anyone here to speak to the-
I was going to get it on the floor, then we'll talk about it.
All right. Motion to approve the permit?
Second.
And it has been seconded. Any discussion?
No.
You want to come up to the podium?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Pizanelli, the local commander of the VFW. This event is a yearly event and it's closing off West Street from Pine Street just before the railroad tracks. And it's West Street Cemetery. There'll be the color guard from the Legion will be there to be a ceremony, wreath-laying ceremony. Rutland High School Band will be there playing three or four pieces. We'll have a guest speaker. The whole ceremony takes, oh, I'd say 40, 45 minutes. And then there'll be a, like a light luncheon at the VFW after. But we've been doing this now for as long as I've been involved with the VFW.
Any questions from members of the board? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Billy, thank you.
All right, next, we'll move to reports and letters from department heads and officials. And we'll start with Susan Schreibman, Municipal Program Manager for Segment 3 of the Rutland Creek Path. There's a memo from Barbara Spalding of the RRA and a resolution on pages 1 to 6 in your packet. So Susan will begin by introducing this item, and then Alderwoman Toddio will read her May 4th report from the Community and Economic Development Committee. Susan, welcome.
Thank you. Paul Gallo is with me. This is, the resolution is to apply for 2023 Vtrans Bicycle and Pedestrian Program Grant to make up some of the shortfall for the Segment 3 of Rutland Creek Path. We've got bids in. We know the actual cost now, and there's a shortfall of about $303,000 based on inflating and adding some contingencies and inflating Green Mountain Powers contract with the city for the work that they have to do. So I guess I'd ask the board to approve the application to Vtrans and we'll see what happens. And hopefully, they want to see this project through and make it happen. The grant will come through by the end of August, I think, is what they said the announcements would be. And we do have some time on our hands because construction of the path is not due to be completed till the end of next year based on putting a new pedestrian bridge in and other things. So we've extended the contract to December 31st of 2024 to complete, and that would give us another round of grant applications should this one not be successful. But we're hoping that they want to make this project happen and connect Segment 1, 2 to 4 with Segment 3.
Great. Now, thank you. I'll ask Alderwoman Toddio to read her report from the May 4th meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee, and this was emailed to you.
Community members present were myself, Alderwoman Kiana McClure, Alderwoman Sharon Davis, Alderwoman Cheryl Hooker. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Paul Gallo, Susan Schreiberman, Mary Markowski, and Barbara Spalding. Meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss funding for Segment 3 of the Rutland Creek Path. Paul Gallo spoke about the Rutland Creek Path. The main goal is to create a pedestrian path and after a scoping study, see where Segment 5 could fit. The first segment was completed in 2010. The second segment was completed in 2014 and then work on Segment 4 was commenced. Segment 3 is now in progress. Currently, the budget for the Rutland Creek Path Segment 3 is $303,249 short. Paul and Susan have worked tirelessly and have been through 12 to 13 rounds of grants and were at the top of the list of grants for four to five years. They have looked for ways to cut costs, including less expensive materials. After putting the project out to bid for Segment 3, Belden was the low bidder. Mr. Gallo stated that ideally the city would sign the contract with Belden so that we don't lose traction. But if we do not receive the grant, which we won't know until August, then we would owe $162,980 of state and federal funding for engineering costs. Sharon Davis clarified that the city, that the request is for the city to sign the agreement with Belden, understanding there is a current shortfall until we know if we are awarded the grant and to authorize the mayor to sign Belden's contract. The application deadline is, for the grant, is June 9th. Mayor Dungus asked about the remaining ARPA balance in case we are not awarded the grant. Treasurer Markowski stated that we have about $325,000 left of the ARPA funds. Then the mayor suggested in the event that we are not awarded the grant, we could likely cover our costs with the 1% option tax. A motion was made to approve the 2023 Vtrans Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant and Circulate for Signature. The motion passed 4 to 0 and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and it has been seconded to approve the 2023 Vtrans Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant and Circulate for Signature. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
I think this is a great idea and it fits with the- I think this is a great idea and it fits with the proclamation that the mayor read last month, um, supporting Bike Month and just sort of demonstrating that the city of Rutland is interested in promoting bicycles, both for recreational use and for utilitarian purposes as well. So, thank you.
Anything additional? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the clerk will circulate for signatures.
Meeting was called to a close at 5:58 PM.
Thank you, Alderwoman Tadia. So next, um, you'll see Barbara Spalding's memo in your packet, which explains that on Monday, May eighth, the Board of Finance approved the bid from Belden Company for one million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for construction of Segment Three of the Rutland Creek Path. Did I get that right? So the request is to approve the mayor's signature on the contract with Belden Company. Did you want to add anything, Susan?
No, I think, um, unless you have questions, any self-explanatory, we've been through, this was the second round of bids we received. We went out to bid in November. They were a lot higher. We, as Anna said, we reduced the width of the bridge and changed the railing to bring down the cost. And, um, we've done what we could. There aren't a lot of things that we could reduce anymore. We've got a lot of in-kind services. Steve Wilk has donated all the pavement. Carpenter Costa and Pratiko, um, Trees Incorporated. We're trying to do what we can and the community is really, um, getting involved. We'd also love to see people adopt a segment of the path, but I'll let Paul speak to that.
So I just want to also mention, excuse me, I also want to mention that the difference between the low bid and the second, second lowest bid was nearly four hundred thousand dollars. So, um, when we went back to Belden to see where we could cut costs, they said, you know, we, we put this bid out with the hometown discount because we really want to see this happen. So, uh, again, the difference between those bids is, you know, thirty-five percent, uh, which is unheard of in your world of bids between low bid and the next low bid, so.
So I believe we need a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second, second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
Move to allow the mayor to sign the contract with Belden Company for the, uh, Bike Pad Project for Section Three, Segment Three.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, uh, the mayor's signature on the contract and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next we have Planning and Zoning Administrator Strinasty with Communications about the establishment of a neighborhood development area. Uh, this is on pages seven to eight of your packet. And the clerk has a larger map that can be passed around for you to look at because the one in your packet is quite small and not in color.
Uh, I do have another one if the board wants to see that. So over the last about seven months, I've been working on what's called the Neighborhood Development Area District. It's a state-run program. It's similar to our downtown designation. Downtown designation is obviously smaller and it encompasses the downtown. Uh, the Neighborhood Development Area is, um, it can be within a half mile radius of the downtown and it's really focused on being, uh, for infill development, housing and creating a walkable, or infill housing development to encourage businesses, uh, creating a walkable environment. When Barbara submitted her, uh, resolution to the board, uh, last, for last meeting for the downtown development, uh, the renewal district, um, I realized I probably should have told you guys that I was also applying for this. This, unlike that one, this doesn't require any legislative body to sign off on it. So, uh, this is more of an FYI that I want to bring to you and answer any questions that you may have. Uh, the district did start off larger. However, uh, there are certain, uh, aspects of their program that kicks areas out. So you'll see an island there off to the west side, which, uh, is where GE and, uh, the Housing Trust has a facility there. They were able to make it in, but it's bisected by, uh, River Corridor and, uh, a flood hazard area. So, uh, since our standards are not, uh, up to state standards, uh, those areas had to come out. Another area that had to come out was the neighborhood to the north, uh, along Crescent Street because that's in single-family resident, uh, in a single-family residential district. And, uh, the program is meant for multi-family housing. So since that district only allows single-family dwellings, that area had to come out. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. There's a presentation on Monday, uh, assuming approval. This district will go in effect on Tuesday. The, when this goes into effect, it basically makes it easier to get funding for people in the district. It helps, um, uh, landowners avoid Act 250 in some areas, which is, uh, major time and cost savings. Uh, and it gives them preferential treatment for grants amongst other things.
Alderman McCann?
Thanks. So we definitely got the size to support this sort of thinking in terms of creating a cluster around our downtown. But I, I see the polygon kind of extends over Main Street, which to some extent acts like a moat, bisects the city a little bit. Any thoughts on how that current infrastructure would play to sort of the intent of this designation?
Um, you know, I, I looked at the district as being more towards what opportunities can we provide landowners to, um, you know, revitalize and, um, bring up the housing stock. Uh, I think one of the most common themes you hear is that our housing stock might be below quality. So, um, and I think, uh, you know, that area, uh, across Main Street could also use some of the rehabilitation money. So, um, so that's kind of why, you know, when I was looking at the district, how it got over there. I did sit down with the downtown, uh, partnership as well. And they were in supportive of the initial boundary that was drawn. It just unfortunately got reduced in areas where we could have used it, but, uh, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Alderwoman McClure?
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for speaking on this. Thank you for bringing a blown up version of the map as well. I was struggling with the little map just a little bit. Uh, my question for you here is I see that it specifically mentions within a walking distance from, uh, the designated downtown.
Yep.
So is there a plan for ADA compliance and improvements on current sidewalk infrastructure after this as well? Because within walking distance seems to depend on who you would ask and their ability to get that far.
Yeah, uh, I would have to defer to Public Works in regards to ADA, uh, accessibility with the sidewalks. Uh, I know they are working on our sidewalks and, uh, trying to rehabilitate what's existing, so. But, you know, in, in theory, this will help only, you know, make that progression faster, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Gillum?
How far is the go up Baxter Street? Crescent?
Um, I, the goal was to get it to Crescent, but I think it actually stopped a little bit short of Crescent. I think maybe a parcel or two. And then if there's any, uh...
Cleveland in there?
Uh, Cleveland, I think actually some of Cleveland does not get in there because of the flood hazard area. So in order to get an area that has a flood hazard into the district, we have to strengthen our flood hazard regulations, which is being reviewed by the Planning Commission, uh, right now. So, uh, it's one thing I will be discussing with the Planning Commission in an effort to strengthen our flood hazard, uh, regulations, create River Corridor regulations. And there's, um, with the new bill that passed in the Vermont State Legislature, multi-family housing will be, uh, permitted everywhere within the city.
President, I, I, I don't have a problem with this, but those two streets that I just mentioned, there's huge old housing stock that really needs to be improved.
Sure.
So we really need to get this flood thing, whatever we have to do.
Flood hazard.
Hazard to get done, so this whole neighborhood could be in that.
Yep, that is, I fought tooth and nail with, uh, ACCD to try to get it in, but it just, our flood hazard regulations just don't meet the state standards, so.
So that's something we need to do.
Yeah, that's something we need to do. And once we get it in, um, or once we strengthen our flood hazard regulations, we can update our, our map and get those areas in, so.
Okay.
Alderman McCann?
Would, would the same go, uh, you said part of it was cut out because it's currently single-family housing? If that changed, would the same go for being able to add that in later?
Yeah, so, uh, one thing I should do before we meet on Monday is to see how, how that affects our original proposal to see if I can get Crescent Street back in, which they might be amenable to. I don't know if they can do it at the last minute, but I can find out.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, so this requires no action by this board. This is for informational purposes only. Any additional questions? Alderwoman Hooker?
Andrew, when would this take effect? I mean...
Yeah, I, I'm expecting approval on Monday, so this goes effect the day after, so Tuesday this will be hopefully in effect.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Uh, next we have Superintendent Peters with an update on Justin Thomas Memorial Park. And there's information on pages nine and 10 in your packet.
So I'll be pretty brief and then I'm going to bring up the Thomas family. I came to the board about nine months ago with, um, the intention of reimagining, re-bringing up, um, Justin Thomas Memorial Park. At that time, the park was twenty-five years old. Um, the Thomas family came to Tyler and I and we began planning. Our goal was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We are at about a hundred and ten thousand. Not to surprise, I'm not surprised by this. Um, I think the Thomas family may be a little surprised, but I knew with our community involvement, um, our businesses, that we were going to reach that goal. And, and I am so proud to announce that, that we are there. Um, we're going to be receiving the play structure in the next, uh, month, which was ordered almost a year ago. If you have gone by Justin, the, the park, you will see the work that's already been done. The bricks that are going in, um, our rec department along with Rory and the family and some donations have been putting the bricks in. If you haven't seen it, please go buy it this week. And I just was really, as an update, that in the next, next month and a half, you're going to see that park, um, being used again. We are just really, really excited. So I'm going to go ahead and bring, um, the Thomas family up because I think they have a couple of things that they would like to say. But I want to congratulate them on all their hard work of bringing this back.
I think Michelle has designated me to be the, uh, the spokesperson for the, uh, the Thomas family. I know Kayla, uh, would love to have been here tonight, but she's preparing for the...
Rutland Youth Theater?
Rutland Youth Theaters, uh, Into the Woods. That's going to be at the Paramount Theater this weekend. That's just my commercial for, for Kayla. But anyways, I know you guys got a big agenda and you guys have gone through a lot of stuff already, so I don't want to take up too much of the time. But if you could just entertain me to talk about just three points that I really, really want to bring up while I have the soapbox here. First and foremost, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone that has contributed, um, to this endeavor. You know, twenty-five years ago, uh, when we lost Justin and, and we took on the, uh, adopting of what was Madison Street Playground at that time, you know, raising thirty-five thousand dollars was the price tag. And we were kind of, we, we knew we could do it, uh, because we had the desire. But that was a big number back in nineteen ninety-eight. And then when we, Tyler and us, we talked about the new number, uh, and, and raising upwards of a, of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And to be at a hundred and ten thousand dollars in less than a year is not just a reflection of Michelle, Kayla and I, but is a true compliment to Rutland, the Rutland area, family, friends and, and businesses. You know, for us just to have the need sake is one thing, but, uh, for people to contribute, to entrust in us, to buy a brick and put a personal message on there, uh, to put a message to reflect on a loved one, a special saying, and then entrust in us to make sure we do right with that is just a great honor. And the people twenty-five years ago, they bought the bricks and we felt that, um, you know, some of them are, can't read very well. But, uh, we felt it was, uh, a true honor to have those and we wanted to keep those in the park. So we actually expanded the Walkway of Love. So we're able to include those along with the new bricks that have been, that have been donated. So upwards of about twenty-two hundred bricks are going to be laid in that, in that walkway. And I'm going to say probably about, let me see if I got my numbers right. Uh, about seven hundred or so of those are engraved with special messages, uh, for folks. So that has been an outstanding fundraiser for us. So thank you to everyone. So my second point is, um, you know, this just journey, um, that has been less than a year. And a lot of this kind of come into fruition really quick. And when we looked at the park and we talked about the enhancements, um, and what we created back then, we didn't want to just overly recreate it. You know, for us, it was kind of reopening a little bit of a wound. But it was a good wound because, you know, for us to reflect on Justin, reflect on the folks that gave their, their time and their, their contribution twenty-five years ago and to revisit with them and to share stories is really great. And we appreciate the collaboration from us and with you guys from the city. Um, the, the money that you were able to put forth to match grants to help out, um, you know, we just thank you a lot. And to work with, with Kim and Tyler. And I want to just go back one second and just talk about three other real quick folks because they are donating their talents, especially with the Walkway of Love. And John Verlet from Hill Country Landscaping has been down there tirelessly, um, creating. The guy is amazing and I don't know much about masonry and all of that, but I do know what I like and I do know what we wanted to do to reflect on what everybody had contributed. And John is just, he's, if the power is ten, he's, he's at twenty with, with his creations. And wait till you guys see it when it's done. But him and Leighton Thayer is going to be, um, donating his talents, um, to do some work in there. And then, um, lastly, Skip Pratico is going to be, um, donating his talents to install the new fence when we get it. But going back to, to these two folks here and not to underscore Kim's contribution because she has been outstanding with helping, but I want to just highlight on Tyler just for a second because like his father, he, he probably doesn't want to be, uh, highlighted on. But you, you've got a special young man there working for you. And for us to talk about the enhancements we wanted to do at the park and for him to take what is in the family's minds of what we wanted to do, to reflect on things, to make enough of enhancements to make the park better. But not so much of enhancements where the kids of the families that enjoyed the park for the last twenty-five years drive by there and go, geez, this doesn't look like Justin's park anymore. And, you know, Tyler has just been a, a godsend, just, just like his father. And, uh, we are, we are so pleased to be working with Tyler. I mean, everything that we, we've thought about, he said, you know what? We're going to, we're going to find a way to do it. He was down there all day today laying bricks and, and stuff. And he's, he's hands-on and, uh, he's, he's a real gem and we appreciate his, uh, his talents. So thirdly, uh, the last thing I want to talk about is, um, there's a, there's a history to that piece of property that I think needs to be reflected on. And I'm working on, uh, several different things. But I just want to bring you guys up to speed real briefly on it and we'll talk about it more later. But, uh, that piece of property used to host a school from nineteen eighty-three, or eighteen eighty-three, sorry, to nineteen thirty-eight, it was the Madison Street Elementary School. The building then became kind of in disrepair and was, uh, stopped being used by the city. stopped being used by the city. The Lions Club came along, and they did some renovations back in the 1950s. And then from 1959 to 1962, the city used it as their rec center. And then in 1962, the city rec moved to, I think, the property up by the library, in which time there was a proposed buyer that wanted to buy the property. Something fell through with that with that deal, and so the city was deciding what they wanted to do with the property. And a gentleman in the neighborhood, Tony Pradico, got all the kids in the neighborhood together. And long story short, they they marched down here to City Hall from that from Madison Street down here, and petitioned in their own unique way, as kids would do, to the forefathers to take that property and make it into a playground for the neighborhood. And it took about eight years for that to happen, but in 1970, the Madison Street Playground opened. And for me, that is just a great story in itself, because that property has always been there for the kids. And if if that march on City Hall really didn't take place back in 1962, Michelle, I, and Caleb might not have the opportunity to adopt that piece of property in in memory of Justin. So in a special place of the park, we are going to be putting together an historical history board that's going to reflect on that story. And I and I think it's it's going to be great. And the folks there want, you know, as they visit the park, to know that the story goes well beyond the last 25 years, and it being Justin's. But, you know, there's a there's a bigger story to be told there. So that that's kind of what I got for an update. I hope that's enough, or maybe it's too much, but...
I know, I just wanted to let you know, like, Kim said, if you want to go down by the park, he talked about what was happening with the old bricks, but all of the old bricks have been created into this really big harp. So we know that some people, you know, asked us about their bricks, and were really concerned that they didn't want their bricks to leave or whatever, and we don't want that. We want that history, along with this board. So if you drive down, you're going to see John's work in this massive, beautiful harp. And then the new bricks will be laid in the walkway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions or?
Any questions from members of the board? Alderwoman Tadio?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for your work for the community back then and again now. Justin Thomas Memorial Park is where I learned to write my name in sign language, or to sign my name in sign language when I was a child. And so just thank you for all of the work that you've done. It's a beautiful memorial.
Thank you. Thanks for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Treasurer Markowski with treasurer's report.
Hi, everybody. Boy, I've got so much to cover. I don't want to get into a lot of numbers tonight, but I do, there are a couple of things that I'd like to cover. Some things going on in the office. Today, I finished up the bond application for two voter-approved bonds. One is a $2 million Streets Bond to finish up a project that we was voted on in March of 2020, I believe. So the streets and sidewalks, finishing up that borrowing. So that one. And then I worked with the city engineer on what needs we might have for this construction season. So we're also borrowing the $1 million that was approved by the voters for paving this past March. So just wanted to note that. So that went out today. One important thing that we're working on with the Department of Public Works is water shut-offs. And I wanted to spend some time on that tonight, just so that you are aware, the public is aware. We haven't shut off water in the city in probably 10 years. I don't know exactly when, not since I've been treasurer or assistant treasurer. But it's difficult. Collection is difficult. But there are consequences to not paying and not coming in and doing a payment agreement. So we have sent out 25 letters notifying ratepayers that if they are not able to come up with a payment agreement, we will be looking to shut off water. So does anyone have any questions on that? I can share the list with you if you'd like, board members, the letter that went out.
Alderwoman McClure?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Tricia Verfetti, very, very happy to have you here. I just have a question on behalf of renters in Rutland City, and I believe it's a question I've asked you before. But I just want to confirm, in an instance in a multifamily home where a landlord may not pay the water, what what would happen in the case of the tenants? Would that be the responsibility of the landlord to relocate tenants into a dwelling that would have running water, or would that fall on the city?
I think through the process, and I'm not clear on the entire process, the city would have to work with the homeowner and the tenants before any water shut-off.
Awesome. Thank you.
There's some pretty, pretty specific rules on shut-off, so we have to be very careful how we do that. But it is something new, really encouraging folks to reach out if you got a notice. We want to see you. We 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 want to talk to you and try to resolve that, or so I I did want to note that, because I think that's an important change that we haven't had in a while. Then I did want to talk about, you know, based on the conversation earlier, I know we're going to, we're going to go to Finance Committee, and we're going to review these numbers. What what does it look like 10 months in, and even as far as the surplus for the end of the year? So I want to talk a little bit about the tax rate and how that surplus works in the tax rate, tax rate, and and how that works. So we start with the approved budget. That's what the voters said. This is what we're okay spent. This is, we approve this spending, right? We add in social agencies. Those are at the, when you're on your ballot, I think there are 360,000, maybe, approved expenditures to social agencies. And then adding back the debt service, those would be the bonds that have been approved. So that really, that's our total need. That's what we really need to raise. So then we go through another calculation. We start offsetting that with, we have a transfer from the Water Sewer Fund. Many of the departments in the general fund service the Water Sewer Fund. So the Water Sewer Fund then pays us back, the taxpayers, through that transfer. Then we look at non-tax revenue. That has been growing every year, which is a great thing, because it's a great offset. Recreation fees, rooms and meals fees, those kind of things. Those offset that need that we calculated. And then we look at our fund balance. The city has a policy to maintain a 10% fund, unassigned fund balance. So we look at that, and we say, do we have any over and above that 10%? And that will go to offset the tax rate. Then we say, this is how much we actually need to raise in taxes. Based on our grand list, if the grand list is up, we should see, you know, maybe a lower tax rate. But all of those things go into that. And as we talk about the unassigned fund balance, using fund balance, I just want you to understand how that plays into the tax rate when we're doing that calculation in July. So any questions on that? I know we'll get into it in in Finance Committee, but I just wanted to give a brief overview of that. Right now, when I look at that unassigned fund balance, it's about 2.5 million, a little bit higher than what we had targeted. So that's a good thing. So there's some resource. We already know we have that unassigned fund balance, but what we don't know is how we're going to land at the end of the year. But we start looking at it in terms of, you can see through the reports, some departments, general government services, that would be my office, accessory office, building and zoning, at 74% of budget to actual. Public safety, police at 68% for end of April, public works at 73% for end of April, recreation at 83%. And then I have a miscellaneous, it's debt and pension payments at 86% of budget to actual for the period. So we're always watching those numbers as we go through, what's overspent, what's not. So I just wanted to point that out.
Any questions from members of the board? No? Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is Commissioner Rotundo. He has two items to come before the board. The first is a request for authorization to award a timber harvest bid, and information is on pages 11 to 15 of your packet.
Okay, so tonight I have two issues that relate to the forester. So actually, I have Joe Epler here, and he's the Assistant City Forester, and he's he's here to answer any technical questions you may have. But the first one is to authorize the mayor to sign a timber sales contract in the amount of $15,201.96 with Lathrop Forest Products of Bristol, Vermont. And if you recall, back, the Board of Aldermen authorized DPW to advertise the selective timber harvest at the March 6th board meeting. We received four bids, and they ranged from $15,000, the the high bid, which is Lathrop. And so basically, they ranged from just a little over $4,000 to a little over $15,000. So again, we'd like to go ahead and have authorization to award to Lathrop, who is the highest bidder for the standing timber.
Move to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight?
Second. All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillen?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the timber sale contract in the amount of $15,201.96 with Rethup?
How do you pronounce that name?
Oh, Lathrop. Lathup. Forest Products of Bristol for approximately 55,000 board feet of sod, log material, and 43 cords of hardwood located on 15 acres in Compartment 5 of the Rutland City Forest in Mendon, with the final form of the contract to be approved by the city attorney.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Any discussion or debate? Alderman McCann?
Yeah, a question about our timber contracts. Do they come with any sort of environmental protection or conservation measures along with them, or is it just sort of tied to the state's AMPs when conducting the logging activity?
Yeah, so all that will be, all that will be followed by the state's AMP regulations. This particular company has been very reputable, and they do an amazing job. So maybe know all AMP regulations. And Tim, Tim Smith and myself will oversee it, make sure that we follow them. It'd be expected to come out.
Great, thanks.
Any additional discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and the second item, I'm asking the board to authorize the mayor to sign a USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant application, if he so chooses, following a thorough review of the federal requirements to be performed by the Engineering Department. Now, this grant application is due June 1st, and we just learned about it, I got involved about a week ago. This is a huge opportunity for the city. We've got to do a lot more investigation into this grant, and that's why the wording of the motion that I'm proposing is allowing the the mayor to make the decision whether we're going to apply or not. But let me just give you a little bit of the background that we've that we found out so far. This grant program is made available through the Inflation Reduction Act, and there's up to $1 billion for investment. So there's a lot of money out there. The the grants range from a minimum of $100,000 to a maximum of $50 million. And and really, the, there's, there's, there's two types of grants. This one here that we were, that we're really interested in is for communities that are disadvantaged. And in your packet, there's a map. It was the last page that I included. And they call it the Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool. But basically, if you qualify, and the city does, most of downtown and the in the southern parts of the city, you can see in the in the shaded area, are noted as disadvantaged by the feds. They, we have an opportunity to waive our share. So typically, this grant is $1 to $1. If we spent, if we weren't, if they don't waive our share, for every dollar they give us, we have to put a dollar in. If they waive our share, then then we don't have to put any money in whatsoever. But again, you know, the reason we really need to look at all of this, this is there's going to be a lot of red tape involved. And I'm going to be, I'm going to go ahead and forward this to the city attorney to have him look at it. We've got to follow all the federal regulations and all the federal rules. But I think this is really a fantastic opportunity for the city to really significantly increase the canopy cover in our disadvantaged and downtown areas.
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. And I'll state that Alderman McCann is going to be recusing himself, because the US Forest Service is his employer. So any discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forest Grant Application, if he so chooses, to follow through the review of the federal requirements to be performed by the Engineering Department. That's the City of Rutland Engineering Department, I take it?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, so the last thing, per Section 9.93 of the Charter, in case of the absence of the mayor from city, or his or her inability to serve, the president of the Board of Aldermen shall act as mayor. In case of the absence from the city or inability to serve of the president of the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Aldermen shall designate one of their number to act as mayor. So I have travel plans at the end of the month that overlap with those of the mayor that I've recently been notified of. So we need to appoint someone to serve in my place as acting mayor from May 29th to June 4th. There are no scheduled meetings of the board during those dates, and I'll accept nominations from the floor. Alderwoman Tadio?
I would like to nominate Cheryl Hooker.
Second.
All right, so we have a nomination, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. Next, we have reports of standing committees, which we have several. First up is a report from the Finance Committee. This was placed on your desk. As Alderwoman Davis is out this evening, I'll ask that Alderman Barbara Gallo read the report as vice chair.
This is a, the Finance Committee met on May 3rd, 2023. Members present were myself, Alderman Savage, Chairman Davis, also present Alderman Copoly, Gilm, McClure, President Talbot, Mayor Dungus, Treasurer Markowski, Lynn Holmquist, and Richard Brigham, CPA from Sullivan and Powers. Subjects discussed the audit report and the city treasurer's quarterly report. Mr. Brigham reported that the city again received a clean audit. There were no material weaknesses or negative findings. He stated that the treasurer's office worked cooperatively with the auditors. He discussed the need to continue to address the pension and parking meter funds. He encouraged the board to focus on the conflict of interest policy, uniform guidance, and procurement policy. The treasurer will address these policies and report by June 30th, 2023. The committee next reviewed the treasurer's quarterly quarterly report. The treasurer's reviewed the bank account balances, pooled cash and the delinquencies. She stated that seventy-seven percent of the taxes billed were collected by March thirty-first. Non-tax revenues were also reviewed, rooms and meals, pilot and fees collected by the city. General expenses are on target at seventy-five percent of the budget. She encouraged the board, as we move forward, to watch overspending in order to control the tax rate. The meeting was adjourned at six-thirty PM, and I respectfully submit this to the board.
Great, thank you, Alderman Barbara Gallo. Next, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the CED Committee, Community and Economic Development, from May ninth. This was placed on your desk, I believe.
The topic was the Special Benefits District Revolving Loan Fund and additionally, the Vermont Arts Council Murals Grant. Committee members present were Kiana McClure, Cheryl Hooker, Michael Talbot, and Anna Tadio. Others present were Barbara Spalding, Mayor Dungus, Brian Boudreau, Treasurer Markowski, Gordon Drichillo, and Tiffany Saltis. Meeting was called to order at five-thirty PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the Special Benefits District Revolving Loan Fund and the Vermont Arts Council Murals Grant. Barbara Spalding presented the updates to the Special Benefits District Revolving Loan Fund policy. The Rutland Redevelopment Authority has improved the policy to make it more applicant-friendly. The funds are used to lend money to property owners to make improvements. The RRA reviewed the policy and recommended a few small changes. The RRA recommended increasing the interest rate from two percent to five percent and adding a non-refundable application fee of two hundred dollars. The RRA updated the application forms that it can be filled out online, and also added a checklist to help people understand what they need to submit. This application can be found on the Downtown Partnership website. Barbara stated that the max loan is thirty thousand dollars, and the funds originally came from the Zomias Fund. A motion was made to accept the draft policy of the Special Benefits District Revolving Loan Fund. The motion passed, three to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alderwoman McClure then presented on the Vermont Arts Council Murals Grant. She is proposing the City of Rutland apply for the fifteen thousand dollar Public Art Implementation Grant. The Arts Council is interested in improving existing infrastructure such as the transit center. Alderwoman McClure proposed local artist Colleen Wilcox, who owns and operates Wander On Woods. She would like to see the mural in the parking garage. Tiffany Saltis asked if McClure had reached out to the Chaffee Arts Center to see if they were interested in being a part of this project. The Chaffee helped with the grant for the art on the city hall. Mayor Dungus mentioned we will need permission from Laz, who operates the parking garage, although the state owns the building and the city leases the space, but he believes they will be supportive. Alderwoman McClure stated if Colleen isn't available, we could go to Green Mountain Colleges or Castleton to see if they have art students interested in being a part of this grant. A motion was made to support the Animating Infrastructure Grant, pending artists' agreement. The motion passed, three to zero, and I so move.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
So if I remember correctly, the wandering on words artist is one that doesn't necessarily have many, if any, murals already around town. Is that right?
Correct.
Great. I think that's exciting, right, in terms of diversity and inclusivity, more voices and more representation of different artists is great. So I'm excited to see that.
My question is, the state does own that building, is that correct?
Yes.
And at this time, we have no permission to do that? Or are they willing to allow the artists to go ahead and just put up a mural?
So there are rules and regulations by the state on specifically murals on transit buildings, and that building is actually owned by, or operated, controlled by the Buildings and General Services Department. And I believe Mayor Dungus had let us know during the meeting that he has plans for that discussion.
Yeah, I do, I have an upcoming meeting with BGS to discuss a couple of things, and that's on the agenda to have that discussion. Do we have permission? I believe in our lease agreement, we have some levity, but I'm not sure if it covers murals. I'm sure that's not listed in there. So if BGS is good with it, I'll make sure that we either cover that in some form of an MOU, or we cover it in this potential extended lease agreement that we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman McClure?
Just to speak on it a little bit more as well, the state has been relatively lenient with other municipalities looking to add this sort of mural art on state-owned property that's operated by the municipality. Similar has been done in Montpelier on very small ballards in a parking structure, and in other communities, it's been seen on transit stops. So this isn't exactly out of the realm of possibility. It doesn't seem like this is something that they would have anything against, but again, pending conversation.
Anything additional? Alderman Gillum?
We still have to apply for the grant, am I correct?
Correct, we do have to still apply for the grant.
The max is fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand dollars for the implementation grant, yes.
And our share would be, if we get the grant, percentage-wise?
The full, we would get the-
The city's share?
The city would get the full-
It's a zero-match grant.
A zero-match. Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Getting adjourned at five-fifty-four PM.
One note, I'm not on the committee.
Oh, sorry. Update that wherever that needs to-
All right, next, we have reports of representatives, sorry, Alderwoman Tadio again, who will be reading a CED report from February fifteenth. The reading out of this report was pending the final resolution language, which we now have, and a copy of that report is on page thirty of your packet. It's followed by a copy of the resolution and the final version of the Rental Housing Revolving Loan Fund Program Proposal. Alderwoman Tadio?
At this time, you were a committee member. Committee members present, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Franco, and Alderwoman Davis. Others present were Mayor Niler at the time, President Dungus, Alderwoman Tadio, Treasurer Markowski, Attorney Blumer, Planning and Zoner Administrator Strenisti, Barbara Spalding, Heather Starzinski, and Melanie Pazkovich, Shelley Lutz, Mary Beth Polley, Andy Shin, and Andy McMillan. The meeting was called to order at five-thirty PM. The first item on the agenda was an update from the Valamont Trails Group. Mary Beth Polley explained that following the previous meeting with the committee, at which DPW proposed an alternate route that navigated around the Rutland City watershed in Mendon, the group had been exploring alternative routes to bring the trail to Rutland City and Pine Hill Park. Failing to find a viable alternate route, Shelley Lutz explained that it seems likely that the trail will skirt around Rutland City entirely. Members of the board emphasized their desire to find a solution to bring the trail through the city. Alderwoman Tadio asked if the trail is encroaching on watersheds in other areas of the state and how the issue is being addressed there. Lutz explained that the trail is being allowed to move through watersheds in several places without significant issue. Alderman Talbot proposed a conversation between representatives from these municipalities, members of the Valamont Group, and members of the committee to explore potential solutions. The second item on the agenda was final review of the Rutland Rental Housing Revolving Loan Fund Pilot Program. Alderman Talbot reviewed that the board had allocated four hundred thousand dollars of the funds previously known as ARPA to this program, and that a year was spent working with Neighbor Works of Western Vermont to develop the details of the program. The proposal had been thoroughly reviewed by Attorney Blumer, Administrator Strenisti, and Treasurer Markowski. About fifteen minutes were spent addressing a handful of unresolved questions related to the definition of vacant, waiving the recording fee, and the fifteen-day window for appealing a zoning permit. At the suggestion of Attorney Blumer, a motion was made by Alderwoman Davis to go into executive session, including the mayor and Treasurer Markowski, to discuss three items in the proposal. Motion passed three to zero, and the committee went into executive session at six eighteen PM. The committee exited executive session at six fifty PM. No additional changes were made to the proposal. Alderwoman Davis made a motion to recommend establishing the Rental Housing Revolving Loan Fund in substantially the terms and conditions presented to the committee, pending final resolution language to be drafted by Attorney Blumer. The motion passed, three to zero, and I so move.
All right.
Second.
So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Committee adjourned at six fifty-eight PM.
Great, thank you. Next, we have reports of representatives, which we have none. Reports of select committees, which we have none. Oh, one. Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Hello again. The committee members present for the Environmental Sustainability meeting were myself and Alderman Joe Barbara Gallo. Others present were Mayor Mike Dungus, Alderman Michael Talbot, Gordon Drichillo, and Mary Markowski. The meeting was called to order at five-thirty PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the building we would like to be assessed for the Municipal Energy Resilience Program, MERP, grant, and to discuss potential options and locations for solar projects in Rutland. Mayor Dungus reminded us there is no match required for the MERP grant. We need to choose a building that is energy inefficient. When assessing eligible buildings in Rutland, the two that are using the most amount of fuel are the police station and the wastewater treatment plant. The police station is having issues with heating and cooling. The wastewater treatment plant uses its fuel to heat its digesters and not to heat the building, while the police station uses its fuel for heating and has needed a new HVAC system for a while. MERP has already done an assessment of our police station and estimated that it costs about fifty-six thousand dollars a year to heat the police station. The mayor mentioned it could probably use new windows. Alderman Barbara Gallo mentioned that the police station is twenty-four years old and has been needing new repairs, and that maybe we could get a new roof and add insulation under the new roof. Treasurer Markowski asked about the Recreation Center as an option, and the mayor responded that the Rec Center was on the list, but the building is newer and likely uses a lot less energy, but does use a lot of energy because its spaces are wide open and not because it's energy inefficient. The mayor mentioned that the backup plan is to have the city pay for a different energy assessment of the Rec Center. The library was mentioned as an option, and Alderman Talbot stated the library will be eligible for other grants, as we saw tonight, so we should wait on the library. A motion was made to approve the assessment for the Rutland City Police Station and to move forward with the MERP grant. The motion passed, two to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
I'll just comment in support of that. I think it's a good idea. I know Chief Kukulon was in here before, looking for opportunities to sort of draw new recruits to the area, and old buildings are hard to get people to work in, so updates to the police office might help with that.
Anyway, anything additional? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman Barbara Gallo then spoke to us about his idea for various solar projects in Rutland. The goal is to locate solar on as many city properties as possible. Alderman Barbara Gallo explained to us that the solar panels on the roof at the Recreation Department are owned by Green Mountain Power. The contract is a twenty-five-year contract and still has fifteen years left on it. Currently, the city only gets ten percent of the revenue, and Green Mountain Power receives ninety percent. He would like to see us renegotiate the contract and either have the city purchase it or have Green Mountain Power donate it to the city. Kim and Tyler from the Recreation Department have stated that the roof at the Rec Department is going to have issues with leaks from the solar project on the roof due to an issue during installation. Mayor Dungus stated that private individuals who install solar panels can receive a thirty percent tax credit, but municipalities can get thirty percent cash rebate from the federal government if we install solar. He also stated that the solar life expectancy is twenty to thirty years. However, by adding solar to a roof, you can extend the life of the roof by ten years. Alderman Barbara Gallo proposed that we meet with department heads to see where we could put solar panels. We need to investigate the cost of the electricity for city buildings. Alderman Barbara Gallo proposed City Hall, White's Pool, Meta Street Playground, Rotary Field, and Geirjetti Park as potential sites. If we can put solar panels above parking lots, it will save the city time and money on plowing in the winter. He also suggested placing solar panels on city streetlights. The goal is that each solar project will ultimately pay for itself. Mayor Dungus stated that it's good business to own our own solar. It reduces our expenses because we can apply it to our electricity bills. There are two methods within Green Mountain Power, including net metering and a power purchase agreement. Most of the ideas proposed by Alderman Barbara Gallo are net metering. We discussed using part of the four thousand dollar MERP community capacity grant to do a study to find where we could place solar panels. Mayor Dungus stated that we could likely study ten sites, since it costs about two hundred to four hundred dollars per site to do a study. A recommendation was made to have the mayor approach Green Mountain Power about the possibility of assuming ownership of the solar on top of the Recreation Building. A motion was made to use the MERP community capacity grant money to hire consultants to do study solar sites. The motion passed, two to zero, and I so move.
Second.
So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion?
I have-
Alderman Barbara Gallo?
One item that we have not mentioned in here, and you nicely pointed it out to me, is that installing solar here at City Hall will require some additional negotiation because we do not own the parking lot. It's owned by the Bardwell. So if we were to try and attempt to put solar there, we would have to negotiate an agreement with them first.
Very good. Anything additional? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Meeting adjourned at six thirteen PM.
All right, moving on to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. We already went over the two special event permit requests. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Alderman McCann?
A question for Alderwoman Tadio, based on the one CED committee report from February fifteenth. There was a comment that the time Alderman Talbot proposed a conversation between representatives from those municipalities, members of the Valamont Group, and members of the committee to explore potential solutions related to the Valamont Trail coming pretty close to our water supply. Where is that in the process? Has that conversation happened? Is that still moving along?
Yes. Mayor Dungus, do you want to speak to this, so I don't?
Sure. So we had a, we had a team's meeting with the gentleman from New Hampshire that kind of gave us their description with the changes right now, you know, with the DPW commissioner changing, with Bob coming in. Hopefully, if you appoint him in two weeks, there'll be an opportunity to, with us shifting a little bit of gears, get Bob up to speed on what we're trying to do, and then go for a site visit and have a conversation up there with both, with both the new DPW commissioner and Tom Garafano, who's the new water treatment plant manager. So having those conversations with the new leadership, talking about the best ways to solve those problems and applying what New Hampshire did in their cases is the direction that we're heading. So we're going to try to schedule that in June, I think. President Talbot and I were talking about that, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other unfinished business. Alderman Gillum?
I just want to make a comment on that. I just want to, why they're having difficulties trying to find a location, it is imperative that we protect that water supply at all costs, because somebody can just go over the fence and the whole water supply is destroyed. So we need to guard that water supply at all costs and do whatever we can, but still accommodate some pass-through there without jeopardizing the water supply. I think that should be the goal to make that happen.
I think this gentleman has a question.
You can come to the mic, because the people on PEG TV can't hear you unless you speak into the mic.
I have a question about the fund that we just raised the interest rate on from two percent to five percent for home improvement, something like that. Is that-
So that was the Downtown Special Benefits Revolving Loan Fund? They raised the rate on that from two percent to five percent?
I see, I see. My only observ-, is that a permanent fund, or is that a, what's the background of that fund? May I ask?
It's been there, it's been there for about four, five years now, so, yeah.
Hopefully, it's permanent. It's a revolving loan fund that the-
Yeah, I just, my suggestion is we should encourage people to upgrade their property, and if the city has funds budgeted for that purpose, rather than increasing the interest rate and the cost for improving the property, then we should review the loans that have been taken out, and maybe rather than increasing the interest rate for that, we should think about lowering the interest rate for that, so that businesses will have more incentive and lower costs to, you know, do painting, or do improvements, or whatever, whatever it is. And related to that, for the, I had a question about the ARPA money. How much ARPA money do we have left in Rutland?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, but related to that, because I thought this was actually for home improvement, and because it's the end of the night, and we're just on this topic of funding that's available for-
So the fund that you're asking about belongs to the Downtown Rutland Partnership, and I believe it's not for home improvement. It's for business improvements?
Well, I suggest that the Economic Development Committee review the loans that have been provided through that fund, and think about how to incentivize businesses to take avail, you know, more availability and more use of that fund, and whether, you know, raising interest rates and the cost of taking advantage of that fund that's there for a specific purpose is the way to go. Maybe we should lower the interest rate to one percent or something like that, or waive the interest rate for a project that's- the interest rate for a project that's, you know, Cheryl deemed of worthy, worthy by the city to, to give financial incentive to. But then I, as long as I...
I think Alderwoman Hooker, did you have a response?
I think that there's a, there's some confusion here because this isn't kind of home renovation type stuff. As Alderman Talbot said, it's businesses primarily and it isn't an interest rate, I don't believe. I believe it's the fee that's been increased, the, the percentage for the fee from 2 percent to 5 percent to cover the administration of the loans and the grants, I believe.
Alderwoman Tadio?
I'm not sure.
Treasurer Markowski, did you want to come up to the podium?
I'll speak to it because it came through the RRA, on the RRA board. So the Special Benefits Loan Fund was established, oh, probably 2008, even, even before that, with $250,000 from the Zomias Fund. And it was established for businesses in the Special Benefits District and I think there were 10 or 12 loans through there. All have been paid back. I think there are two in repayment right now. The maximum loan was 38, $30,000 borrowing and for facade upgrades, business things in the downtown. And we did, we had a policy and we picked it up and reviewed it. It hasn't been tapped into in quite some time, even at 2 percent. So as a committee, we got together, reviewed the program and just looking at market rates and that's where we were. I think we had scheduled like a lower rate, two different rates schedules, but it is an interest rate and not a fee, so.
Sorry.
Very good. Alderman Gillum?
It's a revolving loan fund, so when people pay it back, we lend it out again to others. That's how this whole thing's working. Plus, the other thing, the other bargain that we get, all the properties are brought up to code before they can get their COs. Some of the facades are being taken care of, so we're getting some other benefit out of this, okay? We're getting buildings downtown up to code, which is important.
I see.
But I do get your point.
Actually, I did have another question that's separate from that fund, which is the ARPA money. So someone mentioned there's about $300,000 of ARPA money left. Is that what it is now?
I don't know the exact number. We have to go through and do some calculations based on what's been spent and whatnot, but what's been...
But I just make a suggestion, as long as I'm standing here and it's the end of the evening with you fellow Rutlanders is that some of that money be used to subsidize exterior homes in order to try to improve the valuation of, of property because on Easterly Avenue and in our end of town, it's plain that there are a number of homes that could use paint, a good painting job. And I think that in spending the ARPA money, we should think about, at least with part of it, how to maximize the benefits that are received by individual members of the community and allocating some of that money, perhaps working with a paint supplier in Rutland. I don't know who owns a paint shop, but maybe we could think creatively about how to maximize the bang for those bucks and improve the, the exterior of some of our neighborhood homes. So that's another question for...
Thank you. Do any board members have any additional unfinished business? All right, moving on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions and new business. Alderwoman Hooker?
Thank you. So a situation came up last, a week ago Sunday on Jackson Avenue where a raccoon had been hit by a car. And the raccoon was hit on the north side of the street. Someone moved the carcass onto the south side of the street in a driveway in a house that's up for sale and is unoccupied at the moment. The neighbors, there was a lot of chatter on Facebook and phone calls and emails asking what could be done. Some of the neighbors called Animal Control. They were told to call DPW. DPW said that they would pick it up. It didn't get picked up. Long story short, Wednesday it was still bloating in the driveway on Jackson Avenue. Fortunately, someone did finally come and remove the carcass, but I think what the neighbors would like is a clear procedure for something like this. When I called Animal Control, they said that if the animal is in your, on your property, it's your responsibility to remove it. In this case, again, the house was uninhabited. I even called Casella Real Estate because they had the sign out front and the young woman there was very gracious about taking my message. She had already had a message from some of the neighbors and they were looking into it. So I would suggest that the Police Commission look into this to clarify what the procedure is because all of the calls that are made go to the police station and then you're forwarded to Animal Control. And Animal Control only takes care of live animals, not dead ones. So I don't know what needs to be done as far as asking the Police Commission to come up with some kind of procedure that would be clear when someone calls, you know, who are they supposed to call? I'd also like to know where these animals go. I mean, as a homeowner, if an animal dies on my property, I remove it, where do I bring it? Do I bring it to dump?
Alderman Gillum?
I dig a hole and put it in? I'm not sure.
May I suggest to Alderman Hooker to refer that to the Police Commission and let them look into it and let them report back to you?
Okay, so I would move that the Police Commission take a look at this policy and make it clear to Rutland residents what happens when an animal appears on your street.
Second?
All right, so we have a motion to refer this to the Police Commission. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business to come before this board? Mayor Dungus?
Oh, have you remembered? Thank you for your, your patience for the entire meeting. So I would like to ask the board to set a public hearing for June 19th at 6:30 PM here in the Alderman Chambers. That'll be before your June 19th meeting. The purpose of the public meeting is to take public comment on the proposed designated downtown capital plan and budget. This is to reset our designated downtown and the areas that designated downtown to the city of Rutland.
Move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight?
So we have a motion to suspend the rules and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to set the public hearing to...
June 19th, 2023 at 6:30 PM.
So move.
Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for June 19th? It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
There was a comment tonight about potentially getting the board to recognize Asian American and Pacific Islanders Month and in the realm of inclusivity and recognition, and it also happens to be Juneteenth, and if the city is holding a event, maybe we could comment on the importance of that date then.
Juneteenth is in committee.
Oh, gotcha. I'm not sure what you're asking.
If we could just acknowledge the importance of the, the date of Juneteenth and that...
Not at this special, this public hearing.
No.
I believe this public hearing is required for the application for the renewal of the downtown designation and that is all that we can talk about at that public hearing.
Gotcha, okay.
We haven't voted on it yet, have we?
No. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, and then on that comment, you could absolutely talk about that at your Board of Alderman meeting.
Yes.
And then, I don't know how it happened, especially after last week's meeting, but just so everyone is aware, tonight is Alderman Kiana McClure's birthday.
Happy birthday!
It's a happy birthday!
It's a shame people didn't wish you birthday, your happy birthday throughout the night over and over and over.
I was waiting for someone to start the train and no one did, so.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.